To the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Surrey County Commissioners. We hope everyone had a nice Fourth of July and celebrated our independence. And are having a wonderful summer. We're gonna get right into it and our invocation and pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Eddie Harris.
Please stand. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather to do the people's business here in Dobson. We thank you for our great nation in which we live. We pray for your guidance over our nation and its leaders, that they'll have wisdom to follow the Constitution and respect the freedoms and liberties that we have in this country. We pray for our county staff as they prepare these meetings. We pray for those who are affected by the COVID virus and this pandemic in our country. We pray for our public health officials. And we pray for our police officers, Lord, that they will stay out of harm's way. And we pray for our military. We ask for your guidance, mercy, grace, and safe travel in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. You wanna tell everybody the good news, reason you're a little late?
Oh, yeah, I had my second grandchild this morning. So twelve oh three, my daughter gave birth in Winston Salem and a baby boy. And everything's good, yeah. Thank you. She actually named the baby after the trooper that was killed here in Surrey, Samuel. So good day.
Wonderful. Good news. All right, if you had a chance to look over your agenda, gentlemen, we need the approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the agenda by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, now I need the approval of the June twenty first, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes.
So do, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris to approve the twenty-one, twenty, June twenty-first meeting minutes. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, next on our agenda is the consent. We have four bullet points. NCACC Conference Voting Alternate. Commissioner Goins has agreed to be the alternate. Second bullet point, LT Consulting Additional Services. Third, Workers' Compensation Settlement Activity. And fourth, Sheiky's of Elkin Lease Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, there's an add-on item from the Tax Office, their end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports. That's each spot. That's an add-on.
Okay.
It's an agenda.
All right, gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Goins. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank our tax Mrs. Penny Harrison and all the county staff for collecting over one hundred percent of our budgeted budget for the coming, for this past year, over a hundred and two percent. So that means we've got to do what we need to do. Thank you, Penny.
Mr. Chairman, is that motion inclusive of the add-on item to consent?
Yes.
I'll amend it to be so if that's necessary, Mr. Chairman, including the tax amendment.
All right, motion to include the tax amendment.
In the consent agenda.
In the consent agenda, all right. Do I have a second? Already had a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, next on the agenda is our open forum. I guess you've noticed there's a clock on the wall. Been trying to have a little leniency in the last several meetings, give people a little extra time, but had several emails, messages, phone calls. People complaining I didn't give fair time or whatever. But we're gonna go back to our regular rules tonight. And and I'm gonna read where they start. Rule ten, under the agenda. The county manager or clerk to the board shall include in the agenda of each regular meeting a period of no more than thirty minutes for comments or questions from members of the public in attendance. The chairman will recognize speakers from the floor or sign-up sheet. Each speaker or board member is allotted three minutes. The chairman can request the groups that represent a specific viewpoint, appoint a speaker for each group. The chairman will request the audience to refrain from any form of interruption. If a speaker goes beyond their time allotment, the chairman will advise the speaker to conclude their remarks. Persons addressing the board of commissioners are expected to observe the decorum of the chamber to be respectful of the commission and the public, to refrain from the use of profanity or foul language. Speakers shall not engage in personal attacks that by irreverence, duration, or tone may threaten or perceive to threaten the orderly and fair progress of the discussion. Disruptive behavior will result in removal of the offending party from the public meeting. This rule applies to citizens, county staff, and elected officials. So tonight, there's a clock, and after you give your name and phone number, you will have three minutes to come and say your piece. So the floor is now open to open forum.
That's, my name is J.T. Henson, telephone number three, three, six, seven, five, five, two, one, zero, one. Congratulations, Commissioner Harris, grandson. You're right on point with what I wanted to bring to the board's attention. Over the years, I've noticed a inconsistency of the public forum. And this was particularly prevalent at the last Commissioners' meeting. We had individuals who stood here, turned their back on the audience, and addressed the audience here. Went on. Then we had other speakers who turned and were admonished by the chairman to turn around and face the commissioners. I think you probably need to address that as well in your rules rather than speak here. The other thing is, I'd like to know what progress we are making on our nuisance ordinance to give the citizens some abatement, some of the problems that we're having. It's been a little over three years since we brought to the Commissioners' attention House on Sherri Lane. We've seen the issues on Galax Trail, Turner Mountain, and some others. And I would like to see the board pursue some action and provide Mr. Easter with some tools that we can do something for the citizens, take some little action. And if you can't do it or won't do it, I think that it would be incumbent upon you to simply say, we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna give you any relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
My name is Nevada, well, three, one, two, two, zero, three, eighty-three, zero, one. A fact that you like first, the Westville recycling location is no longer accepting glass due to transportation costs and low demand for glass. By discontinuing the offering, Southwestville citizens drive time and mileage double to get over to two thirty-seven Landville Road to drop off their glass. Can dollars from the anti-litter budget be re-appropriated and or cut back the drop-off days from three to two days a week so that citizens can maintain a one-stop trash and recycle drop-off? And should this be doable, how quickly can one-stop trash and recycling drop-offs get back or get reinstated? We have an issue with that as the citizens of Southwest. Okay?
Thank you.
Because we have to pass garbage along the way, and those that do take it gotta go two stops. Except, okay? So I'm curious to find out how quickly we can get it reinstated to take glass.
We'll get you an answer.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the call.
Good evening. I'm Beth Shaw, three, three, six, five, two, six, seven, four, two, nine. Congratulations, Mr. Harris. That's happy news indeed. Unfortunately, I'm here to talk about something not happy. I'm here again to talk about the opioid epidemic in Surrey County. When I last spoke to you all, I shared that two people a day had died from this horror. This was for the two weeks prior to the June seventh meeting. In the comments later in the meeting, this was disputed, but I can assure you these numbers are correct. The EMT and officers who respond to the panic-stricken calls know it's correct. Volunteers who frantically administer Narcan know it's correct. They count them all, every single one, and every single one matters. The official numbers, these come much, much later, after investigations, after autopsies, after a lot of work goes into it. Some can take even a year. So, yes, sometimes you don't hear the numbers, but they're there. And in the meantime, people die. This past weekend, I had the pleasure of attending a picnic sponsored by the Burches Foundation. It was for kids whose families have been impacted by this epidemic. The Beechnut Campground offered their beautiful property, and the laughter and glee were everywhere as kids swam and ate burgers. And Detective Colton Han brought his amazing search dog that pleased everyone. The dog was definitely a big hit. But remember, remember why these children were there. They have all lost family members to the opioid epidemic, every single one. In fact, the Burches now have six hundred and twenty-one people registered for their help and support as they fight this horrific illness. Six hundred and twenty-one. Just one nonprofit in Surrey County has six hundred and twenty-one people that they're helping. That's not just a number. That's your neighbor, it's your friend, your mom, your son, your spouse. Look around. You all know someone. These are people who are loved and need our help to get healthy again. So what am I asking for today? I know this is the third time I've been here recently. But this is what I'm asking for, simply that you acknowledge in your heart that this county is facing a serious epidemic that is ruining lives, it's hurting children, and it's killing entire generations around us. Acknowledge that despite our sincere efforts to date, many very sincere efforts, it rages on. You don't have to make a statement or tell anyone. Just acknowledge this in your heart, and then make your decisions and allocate funding in ways that truly help us to find a way out of this darkness. Thank you.
My name is Caroline Hanlon, three, three, six, seven, one, oh, twenty-two, forty-seven. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I am the silent person who works with Wendy Odom and her fantastic program, Burches: Overdoses. How many overdoses are recorded in Surrey County? Do you really know, or do you just wanna sweep it under the rug? Do you know what it's like to be woke up at two o'clock in the morning to save a thirteen-year-old and shoot him with Narcan because they're scared to call the police and they don't know who else to call? Or they know because my daughter died of an overdose, and I give out Narcan. Mark Willis, where is your hotline open twenty-four, seven for help? I know, and Wendy knows, from Burches, where the overdoses occur because their friends let us know. When do you meet people or associate with people, Mark? And I know seven or eight overdoses in a week. But no, you say you have the proof. Autopsy reports? Wow, eight months later. Some of these overdoses could have been prevented. These addicts have asked for help, for help. Bring me to detox. What's the response? We don't have transportation out of Surrey County. Well, Mark Harris, a fourteen-seat bus or cars, what are they being used for? You were given the grant money. Hey, I have a request. Why don't Mark Willis put a pair of jeans on, sneakers, and get out from behind the desk? Ride with us, give out Narcan, and meet the people we deal with every day. Talk is the method. He's the opioid director. Wendy and Steve threw a party through Burches, the families having traumatic experiences in their lives involving overdoses, using their own money. Why would all the grants, can this not be done through a program with Mark Willis instead of making videos? A four-year-old does not understand the video, but he understands a day of fun away from the place he experienced trauma watching a member of his family die from an overdose. A little girl seeing a beauty queen representing North Carolina, Wallace East Atkins, because she knows what it's like. Thanks, Wallace. Thanks Sheriff Hyatt and your men. They love choo-choo and the neat little car that they got to drive. And the parents got to talk and listen. It really helped them. Why do we have to work against each other and not together? Explain to the parent that lost her child and got no help from you. Thank you.
Evening, Commissioners.
Congratulations, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Stephen Odom, three, three, six, four, zero, one, two, two, seven, one. I come here tonight myself to speak on this opioid epidemic. Last meeting you guys had, I know my wife had given you some numbers that you, Mr. Harris, called egregious. I, sir, want to tell you what is egregious. What is egregious in this county is being number one in the state for hepatitis. What is egregious in this county is being number one for HIV. For number one, for opioid pills being prescribed in this county, being number one in the state for overdoses. Number one in the state for overdose deaths. And let me say this while I'm at it. There's a big difference between an overdose and an overdose death. Since November one to January thirty of two thousand twenty to twenty-one, this year, we have had three hundred and forty-five reversals reported to us personally. This is not counting EMS, Sheriff's Department, any rescue. That comes down to one point five overdoses per day. This is not a joke, fellas. This does not have a political background. It'll reach across to a Democrat. It'll reach across to a Republican. It has no respect of race, color, creed, religion. I'm sorry, fellas, I thought it was off. I just wanted to get it straight that when my wife gave those numbers out, those are true facts that we report to the state, just as Mark Willis reports to the state. They're not egregious. They are real numbers, real factual numbers that are not being reported accurately. They can't be reported accurately. We're doing the best that we can. Okay? I'd like to see us work a little closer together in the county with Mark Willis. I'd like to see our numbers stop being questioned, because our numbers are being questioned. County's numbers are being questioned. What was egregious is the discrepancy between our numbers and the numbers that your county representative reported to the state this year. My wife gave a phone call to the EMS director, the acting EMS director, David Spate, on the twenty-seventh day of June of this year, trying to get a recorded number from EMS. He chose not to speak on it. He said there were too many, too many autopsies pending, too many toxicology reports pending. So when we talk about egregious numbers, let's look at all of these numbers. And let's question, why was there such a discrepancy between our numbers and Mark Willis's numbers? This county has funneled millions of dollars in the last four or five years into this program. Your numbers are rising every day, not even slowing down. Why is that? Have any of you questioned yourselves why that is? Hey, the Board of Health, man, they've slowed down the opium being prescribed in the hospitals. We have six pain clinics in this county. I didn't realize Surrey County was so broken and in so much pain. Six pain clinics in this county. They're not giving massages. They're not practicing chiropractor. They're passing out pills. Now, let's think about where you put money to. We're not asking you for money. Burches will never come before this board or any other person can ask for money. I promise you that. Think about where you're putting your money. Agreed to let Mark Willis purchase a thirty thousand dollar drug at this last meeting. I am over. The egregious remark, I respect you, Eddie Harris. I respect you probably more so than anybody in this. Thank you, fellas.
Thank you.
My name is Molly Norman Tompkins. My number is three, three, six, seven, zero, seven, seven, five, seven, three. I work for Mountain Valley Hospice and Palliative Care as a patient access liaison in which I cover Surrey County. I'm here representing Mountain Valley Hospice, Northern Regional Hospital, Hugh Adam Memorial Hospital, but mostly the citizens being cared for in Surrey County. We have a growing issue with non-emergency transportation. Various facilities in Surrey County, being Mountain Valley Hospice, Northern Regional, and Hugh Adam, and many of our skilled and non-skilled facilities are having difficulty getting non-emergent transportation for patients who are ready to be discharged to the next level of care. These patients may wait twelve to twenty-four hours for non-emergency transportation. Patients are having discomforts, such as attempting to sleep in the ED for extended time periods. Anxiety arises when transportation requests three to four hundred dollars upfront and because of these extended waits. The stress of waiting on non-emergent transportation has negative impacts on anxiety and discomfort. These patients are at a high risk of readmission, increased infection, deterioration of their condition, and/or not the safest discharges because of their long waits regarding the difficulty with this transportation. Readmission often comes when patients become so anxious that they leave before their scheduled transportation times, and they do not have the needed care or the DME. Non-emergent transportation used to be done by the county, then other transport companies such as Miller's and LifeStar. Currently, Miller's does not pick up and drop off within the county because the franchise expired as of July first. Mountain Valley Hospice has had at least five deaths this year during transportation. I'd like for the Board of Commissioners to work with Surrey County EMS to come up with a plan to return to the practice of non-emergency transportation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Grant Wels, three, three, six, four, four, two, twenty-nine, ninety-one. I got some stuff I need to give y'all appreciation. Can I come up and give it to you?
Yes, sir.
Where do I need to go?
Grant's good singing, huh?
Okay. I'm here to talk about the project that's very dear to my heart, the Easter Brother mural. It's a long time ago, my dad gave me a piece of advice. When you start something, you always finish it. The project took long months of planning and prayer to be reality. The donation given by the county helped reach our goal and finish the project, which y'all give a thousand dollars. Thank you so very much, much for the donation. The mural is located on Main Street, Manory, near the Manory Music Center. May the fifteenth, we dedicate it to the Easter Brothers. His dedication was a big success. Special intended in was Tim White, Jeff and Sherry Easter, James and his niece Easter, Larry Johnson, Ron Niven, and Deborah Crocker, and many others. So I'm excited to inform y'all that we've got room this year. I went and found room for Jeff and Sherry. They're gonna come down here September twenty-fifth at four o'clock at Weson Church in Banertown, which is below the Derby. So if anybody would like to attend, we would appreciate it. Thank y'all very much for your time. Oh, are you in there? Oh, when you enter, this right here is the newest album that's come out. They took his mural, it's the 40th anniversary along some river, and they took this cover, say what says on bottom, Manory. And they've been singing for 40 years. If you look inside, it tells all about the Easter Brothers. So I think that's pretty amazing because I've worked hard on this. And without y'all, it wouldn't have been successful. So I want to tell you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Frank, what was that date?
Sir?
September the what?
September the 25th.
25th.
At 4:00 at Manory Weson Church.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Did I give enough? Y'all get enough of them? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening.
Evening. Congratulations, Eddie.
Thank you, Frank.
Most exciting days of my life is when kids come in the world, so I can imagine. But my name is Frank Beals. My phone number is three, three, six, eight, seven, four, two, six, three, one. Good evening, Commissioner Harrison Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I deeply care about Surrey County and have chosen to share my thoughts and hopes of preserving and improving our great community. As a Republican, I would like to start by thanking you for the efforts to draft and implement a physically conservative budget. I would score you with an A+ on this accomplishment. Thank you. I would also like to thank you for your interest in preserving the right to free speech in our county because it's hugely important to our democracy. However, I would like to help you understand how your words and actions, particularly those taken following the May the 17th, strayed from the roots of the Republican Party and are actively destructive to the notion of free speech. Free speech is a protected right for every citizen, whether the citizen be an individual or corporation. We hold free speech as one of the main foundations of our party, whether we agree with the speech or not. We expect good ideas to be supported and to grow, and bad ideas to be discounted and forgotten. But we support the right to say it, right or wrong. On the 17th, your actions indicated distaste for corporate involvement in politics. One example of a corporation using their resources to promote particular viewpoints is Mike Lindell, the MyPillow guy. He has used his position to express his political beliefs. He is held out as a great leader of the First Amendment rights among the right. Yet, here in Surrey County, you have taken a different stance in dealing with Coca-Cola. Your censorship and punishment punished a corporation because they utilized their free right of speech to advocate for their political beliefs. You have made it clear to corporate citizens who oppose viewpoints that they should shut up and stay out of politics or, as a government entity, will penalize them for doing so. And you are not only attempting to silence the Coca-Cola, but also hoping to silence our own teachers and public educators as well. Your actions here in Surrey County are not in defense of the First Amendment rights. They are akin to the censorship and leadership of Germany during World War II. As Republicans, you should be protecting the individual rights not to be overly burdened with government rules and regulations. Is it the government's right to tell us how to think and force us into specific beliefs? To quote one of our highly respected commissioners and a friend of mine, I'm very concerned about the council culture, social justice warrior, enraged woke mob, the critical race theories, the intolerant bigoted Democrats, and the sensitivity training. They use code words like inclusion, diversity, inclusivity, cultural reeducation, sensitivity training. Let me tell you, I will agree with my friend, these are our code words. They're code words used by the fascist mob of January 6th and other right-wing media conglomerates to describe our democratic friends and neighbors. I do so wish the public would take some time to read the investigative report by Senator Burr with the Russian interference in 2016. The findings of that report were that the intent of the Russian leadership was to polarize our country into two extreme camps by spreading lies and conspiracies via social media. The Russians went so far as to facilitate rallies on the right and left.
Good evening. My name is Chandler Beals and my number is three, three, six, eight, seven, four, two, six, three, one. Yes, there are extremes on both sides, and more of them today because of the Russian success in polarizing us. But we must overcome this urge to embrace false narratives and rhetoric. Cancel culture, the enraged woke mob, critical race theory, intolerant bigoted democratic mobs. These are words uttered in this hall to describe and define Democrats. They all stem from a carefully orchestrated propaganda machine that repeats these carefully crafted words and phrases to keep us outraged, to keep us divided. It is a false narrative and it is one that we must resist. School boards in our Surrey County are not being approached by a woke mob to implement critical race theory. The woke mob, as you call them, are coming to ask that we try to do a better job at recycling, that we support a Creek Week, and that we improve our hiking and biking trails. No woke mob has changed the curriculum of our schools. However, you have employed censorship through policies implemented on May 17th of the right-wing media in embracing a false narrative and then engaging in censorship of the views you dislike with government regulation. It is un-American and anti-Republican. Give it another six months, and the right-wing propaganda machine will have a new set of code words to label the other. But regardless of this verbiage, is it right to hurl those extreme labels at people here in Surrey County, the general population of North Carolina, or even the larger population of the United States? We have let the Russians and the algorithms of social media feed us the garbage of the extremes. Money and hate-driven extremist news networks have led all of us into fights to save our democracy from an enemy that doesn't really exist. You talk of censorship coming from the left, and then in the same breath, use our country government as a weapon to censor. It's un-American and the opposite of Republican ideals. Censorship creates fear of consequence, such as losing one's job if an employee chooses to speak out against a mandated government's instruction. When was the last time people feared their own government for expressing an idea that didn't conform to censored thought? Are we not following an awfully bad pattern? Mark Twain once said, "History doesn't repeat itself, it rhymes." Who are we rhyming with? Have faith and love for our fellow man. Have faith and love for our nation and country. I'll end with what is considered to be the second most important commandment. You shall love your neighbor as thyself. I call us tonight to not support division in our county, but to support love. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beals. Anyone else? All right, we will now close the open forum. Next on the agenda is Mr. Johnny Easter, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight I bring for you zoning staff report for rezoning case. Rezoning case number CZR 1210. The applicant is Terramore Development. The current zoning of the property is zoned RA and they're requesting a highway business. The tax parcel ID is a portion of 6052. The proposal is to recastify a three-acre portion of the parcel number, any in 6052, for highway business use specifically to allow for a discount store project. This is a general use rezoning. The property owner is Chilton Ventures LLC. The property location is on Cook School Road. It is currently zoned RA and has been zoned RA since initial counting zoning in 2001. The property is located in an open area of low to medium density along the Cook School Road near the Highway 52 interchange. There's mixed-use highway business already currently around the specific area and interchange of Cook School Road there. It is in the Pilot Mountain Knob Fire District. It has served our private whale and septic. This is consistency with our 2040 land use, small land use plan in that specific area where it's at. We did communicate with the applicants in June about this project as well. We did not receive from the planning board, receive any call or any opposition to any of the rezoning requests associated with this property. And it was approved unanimously by the planning board last Monday night. So I'd be here to entertain any questions or comments that you guys have about this.
Would this be basically the same situation as Zephyr Road?
Yes, yes.
Same type, same, the produce and everything, bigger store. All right. All right, now we gotta have a...
Yes, sir, thank you.
Public hearing. I will now close the regular meeting and open up public forum for rezoning case number CZR 1210. Do we have anyone here to speak on that tonight? I've already asked the question, huh?
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Fox. My address is 400 Bellmead Street in Greensboro, North Carolina. Have with me Daniel Almazan here from Terramore Development. As you heard from your planning staff, this request is very similar to the one that we were before you last month with. Similar situation near an interchange. Your future land use plan calls for commercial here. Staff has recommended it. Planning board passed it unanimously, and to our knowledge, there's no opposition. So knowing that you have a busy agenda before you tonight, we're happy to answer questions if you have any. Otherwise, we'll be very brief and be here at your pleasure.
Any questions, gentlemen?
More specifically, what exactly is it going to be the intended purpose?
A Dollar General store.
Dollar General.
Yeah, yeah. Very similar to what was discussed last time in terms of the larger footprint store with fresh produce and vegetables.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Is anyone else here to speak on this rezoning?
Okay. Mr. Easter?
Yes, sir.
No one, just to clarify again, no one came in opposition? No public input? Nobody showed up at the hearings or was it, and it was publicly posted?
Yes, sir.
As always?
Yes, sir.
Essentially, no negatives?
No negatives.
No one said with this is a bad idea?
No, we didn't receive any phone calls as well with this.
All right, I will now close the public hearing and open up back our regular meeting. All right. First, we need to adopt a statement of consistency. Have a motion. Motion by Commissioner Goins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next, we will vote on the rezoning for ZCR 1210. Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Do I have a second? I'll second that, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. The next agenda item I have is want to bring to this board, have a couple of proposed text amendments to add to our current zoning regulation. Surrey County and our zoning regulation currently doesn't address electronic gaming establishments. That's the first thing we're gonna do. They're known throughout the state, throughout the county as sweepstakes, internet cafes. As currently, as our zoning ordinance is written, we don't have anything that specifically addresses those entities. The closest thing that we do have in our zoning ordinance is arcades. Arcades, in research with this, arcades are as defined currently as establishments that primarily offer amusement such as video games, pinball machines, and other similar games, not for gambling of any type. The electronic gaming operations or the sweepstakes places in essence meets this definition. It's currently, after discussion with Mr. Walts and discussing with Representative at the Sheriff's Office, I feel like it's time for us to adopt this into the ordinance. We're starting to see these things pop up throughout the county in specific areas. One of the reasons why I want to address this is arcades are allowed in community business, rural business. They're allowed throughout the county in various alleys. So by adopting this text amendment, we would define what an electronic gaming establishment is. And we would confine those to specific locations of highway business and put restrictions on where they could, specific distances away from houses of worship, from individual other places, public safety, public parks, playgrounds, daycare facilities. So we could kind of have a better grasp on where these could locate it in and more the more business-type areas and not throughout the community of Surrey County. So that's one of the first text amendments that I would like to address. Proposed this to the planning board on two separate meetings and had a discussion with this. Like I said, it was unanimously approved as writ. So I'd be more than happy entertaining discussions and questions about this specific text amendment.
You said you spoke with Mr. Walts. Do you agree? All right.
We currently, City of Manory, City of Elkhorn currently has these. We don't have a text amendment that says it. So we've had a couple of these that says we're an arcade. It's games of skill. So we want to kind of cut these and manage these. And also with this text amendment, I know it's not in the menu line, is I want to amend the definition as well as arcades to specifically exempt electronic gaming operations. They're not an arcade. So if it's an arcade, it's an arcade. It's what we would consider an arcade. So those are two things without proposing. We'll just, like I said, if you guys have any questions or anything to discuss with this, I'd be more happy to address anything about...
Anyone got any questions for Mr. Easter? Okay, well, entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the text amendment proposal by Johnny Easter Development Services Director concerning electronic gaming operations and multipurpose events centers.
Yeah, also discussed a multipurpose event center. That was just electronic gaming facility. The multipurpose event center is something a little bit different. Multipurposes event centers, we have to, that's currently in our zoning ordinance. We don't have, we have wedding chapels. So we have, we get a lot of calls and a lot of questions about people wanting to do not a banquet-type facility, a multipurpose room that I'm able to rent out for parties, for weddings, for rehearsals, for proms. We have these throughout the county. We tend to group those all together and call them wedding chapels. I don't feel like that they need the definition of a wedding chapel. These are multipurpose event centers where they do other things there. And having discussion with some of these throughout the counties that went through the planning board process, they would like to offer other services to the people they provide to bring people into Surrey County. And talking with these facilities and talking with these places specifically, reached out to them, what about providing lodging? To bring lodging in here if I'm having an event and I'm bringing people from out of town? Could I have the ability to add a couple of cabins? Potentially add a couple of RV hookups in conjunction with that to bring people into Surrey County to stay at these places? So reached out to multiple facilities throughout the county and said, if we could offer these facilities, would you be willing to add some of these things? We currently have one facility here in the county, White Sulfur Springs, that has the multipurpose event center and has cabins. So I've reached out to some of the other places throughout the county and said, hey, look, if you have the opportunity to have the property rezoned, to add some of the cabins, add some of the glamping pickup or hookups there, would that be an option? So included that in there just to be able to have one blanket statement, a zoning allowance, so people could come through and they wanted to do this event center so that way they could have the ability, based upon the size and specific regulations associated with that, would require a conditional use permit, would be approval from the planning board as well. But they could do more than just have that event center if they wanted to provide lodging with association to the events going on there. So that's what this purpose is for, this event center. So we do get multiple calls about this. We have these throughout the county. And it just kind of a catch-all to be able to, to people to allow to do these things. And we really didn't have a definition that approached this or come close to this. So that's what this other definition or text amendment would be.
All right. Just we need to close the regular meeting and open up the public hearing on this text amendment proposal for electronic gaming operations and multipurpose event center. Anyone here to... Anyone here to speak on this? What's in it? How could, I have an informed opinion if I haven't read the text? That's my question. We had it in our pocket. And they had it in, they had two meetings in planning board.
I'm Paula Stanley, three, three, six, three, six, eight, four, eight, five, zero. I didn't know this was coming up tonight, but I live off Cook School Road and we currently have one, I think it's called Duck Duck Go or something, I'm not sure what it's called. But anyway, a gambling, gambling facility at the end of our street and we're getting ready to have another one right across the road from him. A guy from Raleigh came up and bought an empty building and is in the process of putting another one there. We have lived there for over forty years. We've never had to lock our doors, never had, lock our cars or anything. And since this place has gone in, we've had vehicles broken into, we've had homes broken into. There've been issues outside in the parking lot at the current place. So I just am very opposed to them. There are churches very close to both of these facilities and residential areas. Like I said, they can just walk right out of that place and go down our street and see if they can find some change, I guess, when they run out of money. So again, I don't know what can be done. I wish they were totally illegal and I'd really love to not see us have any, but I don't think we need them out in a rural area of neighborhoods and churches and children and, and that kind of thing. And I can, like I say, personally attest to the fact that they cause problems.
If I'm not mistaken, this puts stricter regulations on those places.
Absolutely.
So they wouldn't be grandfathered in.
Well, they're still there, they predate the zones, so they would be. Part of this, the purpose of this is, is based upon some of these things keep popping.
Yeah.
So we would, we would, a part of the approval process, before we'd issue a zoning permit from this, we would request a specific site plan to make sure they maintain the five hundred foot separation distances and all that before we approve that.
And I think they're open twenty-four hours. I mean, I don't care what time I come by there, their car's there.
I'd have a duck, duck and go, Paul.
Do what?
I guess you can expect that I would.
Well, I guess so, but I, I wish they would go for sure. Thank you.
You, you can create guidelines like this and you can amateurize, what they call amateurize, the ones that are already in the county legally, which would require them to come in compliance with the regulations you adopt within a timeframe, is that correct, Ed?
Has somebody, the second one, has somebody filed a permit to do that?
Yeah, there was a permit issue in, from, from the, from the remodel of the one on Cook School Road. The zoning permit they submitted to us, it's an arcade. That's what the zoning permit is and the gentleman from Raleigh submitted it and it is permitted and is it?
An arcade?
No, no, no. Prior to that, it's an arcade because it's not gambling, it's not illegal, it's electronic, it, it meets the definition. So there's, there's, in essence, it's a loophole. So this would say it's not an arcade, it's electronic gaming establishment, so.
But there's a loophole in the law that, there's loophole that allows it to operate.
Correct.
They filed an injunction. And then now we're in a legal battle.
Correct.
That's how.
Correct. Correct.
History of them for many, many, many years.
Yeah.
One different type of software is deemed legal, then it's deemed illegal, then they modify the software and the game of chance, what is a game of chance? Been going on thirty years.
And, and I feel like from, from, from a county zoning and, and, and a board standpoint, that if we can really limit where these things could be located and have some checks and balances, we don't get phone calls from the rural country store that says, well, I'm community business and now I want to put one of these things in here. Not to say that there's any wrong with it, but I think that we address these and we kind of put these in the specific areas of more high density, more, more of the highway business associated and not more in the rural aspects of the county. So that's the purpose of this, you know, to make sure we meet setbacks. In essence, part of the regulations that here are associated with the drinking establishment. We were looking at it pretty much like it would be a, a drinking establishment, some of the setbacks associated with this and some of the requirements with this.
Any more questions? Is, is this still an open forum type or? We, we can go ahead?
We are.
You, you mentioned the, the folks over White Sulfur Springs.
Correct.
Now, how, how is that, how are they zoned or whatever?
Currently, it went through the zoning approval process years ago and it was zoned, the specific, they have, they have different zoning out there. But the individual event center, I think it's a hotel motel, what it went through conditional rezoning years ago. It, it didn't meet that definition, so our planning director said, okay, the intent of the rezoning was that kind of meets the intent, so it went through that. But at this time, in having discussions, and I have had discussions with representatives of the White Sulfur Springs, if they could look and maybe potential come before the board and have the property rezoning, they're looking at putting some of these glampor type RV camp sites in to add a couple to it. So due to COVID restrictions, they said multiple people purchased RVs and they get calls and contacts about people wanting to stay at specific events to have their RV camp sites. So they, they would, they're, they're very inquisitive into this and a couple of people I've talked to have approached about wanting to do these type of glamping type things there to bring RV up for events and stuff like that too, so.
You also mentioned wedding venues and first thing, one of the first thing I thought of was a lot of our vineyards offer a beautiful place to have a wedding.
Correct.
Certain criteria they have to go.
No, no, that, that's a little different, some of, yeah, well, some, some of those fall under bona fide farm exemptions. So, so, so we, we don't address those, the ones that are bona fide farms. But if, what, what started this is I've had multiple conversations, had a gentleman that looked at buying a substantial piece of property, former business from, from Charlotte. And wanted to come up here and said, I want to do a wedding chapel event center, I want to add a couple of cabins. And we really didn't have, we would have to kind of piecemeal it together and reaching out to some of the facilities that are already in operation in the county here said, hey, look, if you have the opportunity to provide lodging that was associated with a specific event that was going on with there, would you consider doing that? And after talking to multiple facilities and they said, yeah, absolutely, that was something that we would like to have the option to provide down the road. We have people driving here to spend the weekend and, you know, it's, it's not revenue and people are wanting to stay here. So that was just something that just kind of got put in there. I don't think everybody is willing to do this, but give people some of the options so that way they're not pigeonholed to want something specific. That's kind of the approach with this.
Out of curiosity, is the man's tip from Charlotte still interested?
I, I don't think so, I don't think so. I think he's still integrated the property, but the project was, was pretty substantial, what, what he wanted to do, but yes, he is, he, he's still interested, yes.
Any more questions? Anyone else want to speak on it? I will now close public hearing and open back up the regular meeting. Are we going to vote on these individually or together?
We submitted them together, so you could vote on them together. I, I had just one question.
I was going to amend my motion. If I may, I might have made it at the wrong time. But if you call on me to, when it comes to opportunity, I'm going to make a motion, but I want to amend my previous motion.
On that multipurpose event center, you said it's all conditional use permit?
Right.
Would it not be more, was there any discussion, I guess, in the highway business about making it just a permitted use?
That, that's one aspect we could add to it, but normally where we see these are more in the rural areas. We don't have a lot of these. Every conversation I have are more because the sheer volume of, of property that would be required for the, for, for, for the event centers, normally they're out because they want to use the vineyard, the rolling landscape, the, the amount of property that they have out there. We, we don't see, I don't think I've been approached with any one of these that were, would be in highway business. It's more tends to be in the, the RA, RA type areas of the county.
I agree with the RA and CP would be, makes sense to be conditional.
Right.
When I look at highway business, I just, I can think of permitted uses of highway business that are much more noxious than, than this.
Right.
I mean, I would.
If, if we could add it a hundred percent, I, I would be.
Make it, unless you, you know, unless the planning board had a reason, they may have.
I, I don't, I don't think we had a business, I don't think they had an issue associated with that. I think it was just discussions more about to get in the definition and what we would be able to allow and not allow. That was more of the discussion with that. I think the intended uses of, or the approval, not approval, if it was permitted or not permitted, that wasn't a, an issue at all associated with that. I just normally associated with these and every conversation I've had, not, I, I don't think anyone's approached this at all about it being in a highway business district at all. Not saying it's not out there, but.
It'll be as allowed as condition.
Right, right.
All right, any, any more questions? All right, we're gonna, I believe we're gonna separate the two.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, I'd like to amend it, I, I was out of order in making it at that time during the public hearing, but after hearing as much as I've heard, and I'm not sure, that's not a wonderful thing, the multipurpose event center issue is it's made me think about a few more questions that we don't have time here tonight to discuss and I, I would like to, I want to amend my motion to allow the text amendment for the electronic gaming operations. But tonight I would not be prepared to include the multipurpose event center in that. Now, if he wants to bring it back to later time or if he wants to do that, that's as far as I want my motion to go tonight until I have adequate time to ask Mr. Easter, maybe give a little bit more opportunity to present and explain to me the multipurpose event center issues that he's wanting to tackle. So my motion is, I would be willing to make the motion to go along with the text amendment on the electronic gaming operations and I think that is time sensitive and, and urgent. And on the other one, it might be exactly where we need to go and something I would really support, but because I have a few more questions, I'd like to change my motion to be applicable only to the electronic gaming operations text amendment change or addition.
All right, motion by Commissioner Tucker for the amendment of the gaming operations. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Second by Commissioner Goins, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to ask Mr. Easter at his earliest convenience, if he would, to apprise you and/or if he wants to do it through committees or this board on the, or to be able to do a little question and answer on the multipurpose event center and what the planning boards had say about it. And, and a few questions I would have about other things that it might entail. Because it might be exactly what we need to do, I just feel like we need to split those issues till we hear a little bit more about it, I do.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, gentlemen, are you satisfied with that? Mr. Johnson? All right. All right, next on the agenda is Christie Preston, Department of Social Services Director, I don't believe Christie is able to attend. I believe we're going to turn that over to Ms. Nikki Hall and Ms. Weddell.
Good evening. I have two action items for you this evening for services. The first is the, two, the first item is the Energy Assistance Outreach Program, which does require board approval. For those, but we submit a new energy plan each year to the state of North Carolina and this is our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two plan.
Had that in our packet?
Yes.
Thank you. First sentence I read on the second page, I remembered.
And the second item is our in-home aid service policy, which was also in the board packet. And that requires your approval if we. And the agency is just required to have a policy to cover in-home aid services because we do provide level one in-home aid through adult services in our area. So those two items just require your approval.
All right.
How much in-home aid service do you, are you involved in a bunch, many clients, multiple clients?
Um, yes, sir, we have, we have probably about probably around fifty-five adults that receive the level one in-home aid service through our agency.
And do you provide your in-home aids or do you contract with in-home aid agencies or how do you do that?
Our in-home aid service, the level one is different from other, in, from traditional in-home aid. We have community social service assistants that provide the in-home aid service, which is more assistance with groceries, medical appointments. It's not any personal care for the client. Not any housekeeping duties, it can be help with budgeting, help go into the bank, help with banking, things like that. So we only have one community social service assistant that's employed through the county that provides those services.
I was going to say, you just have, there are a few people that do.
Yeah, it's a minimal, minimal amount of time that is.
Your employees through the Division of Social Services, count their county employee.
Yes.
All right, first, any more questions for Ms. Hall? We'll go ahead with these action items then. We need a motion to approve the agency's energy assistance outreach plan for twenty-one and twenty-two. Have a motion, gentlemen?
Some movements, Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next motion is to approve the agency's in-home aid service policy. I'll make that motion, Commissioner Marion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I have just a, a couple of information items for you. We did have a child support shout out for Lisa Jackson being recognized in April for outstanding collections. She secured a twenty-three thousand, forty-nine dollar, ninety-one cents workers' compensation settlement for one of her clients. The adult social work services are going to begin regional supervision with the department, the Division of Social Services. They'll have their first regional supervision in August twenty twenty-one. So that is different for adult services and they'll do that through SharePoint. And we are excited about, about that actually, for a structured QCI process for adult services. We had a partners project. Partners Behavioral Health Employee Project. And they gave out some backpacks for different age groups. And I believe that the information about what was in those backpacks was included in the flyer or in the packet, but there were books, school supplies and water bottles, sanitizers, baby wipes and for the different age groups and we did participate in that with partners. And also wanted to recognize that Wesleyan Methodist Church did hold a luncheon for the Child Protective Services staff in the month of April in recognition for Child Abuse Awareness Month, National Foster Care Month. And one of our foster parents is a member of that church and they have been very supportive of our staff and they very graciously provided our staff with a lunch and we were very appreciative of that. And also the board training offered by the school of government in August has been canceled and there's not a new date for that yet. That is all I have and I'll turn it over to Ms. Hill. That is all I have, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Hill.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have just a few updates for you on the economic benefits side. In your packet attachment E, you have the information about the certification program. The state has decided after several years to enroll the caseworkers in certification for NCFAST. We are in Group Four, so that is coming to us August. We do have someone identified at the county level that is gonna take over that and keep up with it for us and make sure all the caseworkers are trained. So if you want to read through that, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Also, Christie wanted me to update you guys on the RITA, which is our recipient eligibility determination audit. I think you may have been updated before on that, but we are, it is a ten-month project. We're in the fourth month. They are pulling twenty cases per month. So we've completed sixty of those with very good results. In the fourth month, we're about halfway through, so that month is going well also. But so that's about, we've still got about six months on that, but it's going very well. And the last update she had for me was our transformation, Medicaid transformation. I know y'all are aware of that, and it was live and effective on July first. So we are moving in that direction. Everything is going well with that. It's, it's not been anything major happening there, a lot of phone calls, a lot of, a little bit of confusion with clients, but we have a lot of information to share with them. Probably our biggest hurdle with that has been that there are four insurance companies with that. The local hospitals have only signed up with two of those. So therefore, we do anticipate a little bit of some problems down the road, maybe with some of the clients and their access to care normally. I do have a meeting with Northern Hospital on the twenty-eighth of this month to try to see what we can do to help them see if they wanna maybe take on a couple of more of those insurance companies. But other than that, we'll just wait and see. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Questions, gentlemen? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Jessica Montgomery, Public Works Director. There's fantastic news, I know.
Good evening. How are y'all? With the recent addition or approval of the detention center comes some boxes to check. So I'm here tonight to get you all to check a box for us. We did a request for qualifications for site and construction testing and had three responses from Geo Hydro, SNME, and Summit Design and Engineering Services. Geo Hydro has already been on-site and performed the geotechnical soil borons and investigations, and also did the topography, so they're familiar with the site. And the architect said that they are also a good firm, and all of them were qualified to do the job. But since they're already familiar with the job, it's staff recommendation to approve them to be our testing firm.
You need action, right?
Please.
Gentlemen, you've heard, heard the Geo Hydro recommendation from Ms. Montgomery. Do I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Goins, is there a second? I'll second that, Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any idea when we might be able to get those bulldozers rolling?
Reconstruction is Thursday, so we will know shortly thereafter.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Penny Harrison, Tax Administrator.
How you doing? I've got a couple things tonight. Should be in your packet, the request to switch back our revaluation from five years to four years. Right now, we're set to do reevaluation for 2026 on the schedule that we are at. And I've got a resolution in your packet, a copy of it, requesting to go back to four years, which will, at its back, will bring us to 2025. And.
Just for, just for one time, or every four years from that, then on?
It'll be four years from then on.
We changed this to get in sync with our surrounding geographical and contiguous counties because we were facing the same issues. There was sometimes challenge with the state and the way we did big box evaluations and so forth. But we, so we changed it by one year to get in, in the same cycle as some of our other counties around us, challenging, making these same challenges and new adventures.
Yes.
So what does this do? Does this keep us in the same cycle with these counties, our peer counties and contiguous counties and geographical close counties? Or do we get back off schedule with the ones that we changed it forward to start with to get in, in, in the same cycle?
This will keep us in line with Forsyth, Allegheny, Stokes, Davie and Davidson. Now, Wilkes will be the only one that's off with us. But everybody else is, we're all in line with everybody else. Well, we're with everybody else now. Yeah. Now, yes.
I have a question. I think, but it's not, what's the requirement? How often does it have to be?
Eight, eight years.
Eight years.
I just need, I just need a motion. Yeah, I need action.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the request. Have a motion.
I think it's important to stay in the same cycle with most of these counties around us because we fight the same battles together. So I don't know why Wilkes is not on board yet, but I'll make a motion that we do that and change it to four years. So we will stay with the other counties in the same reevaluation process they're in and the same timing.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker, change to four years. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will say publicly that I support the four-year cycle on reevaluation. It, it really helps avoid the wild swings of valuations being up or being really accelerated. This used to be a lot more controversial issue when I came on the board because I know we tried to postpone it one year, and there was a huge public outcry. We were trying to, this was at the end of the financial panic, and we were trying to get a break for the citizens of Surrey County. But it didn't play off that well, so we stayed on the four-year schedule. It's a good move to stay on that, and like I said, statutorily, you can do eight, but four years is a good schedule. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, the next thing I have are the foreclosures. And they were approved a while back by the Finance Committee to process these foreclosures. And you should have the copies in your packet. And I've got them numbered, one through five. And they've, they're ready to be sold. And they have been advertised in the Mount Erie News and in the Elkin Tribune. They're, they've been put on the website, the Surrey County website. I've got the first one, they owe taxes from 2015 through 2020. I've got it, got the opening bid and the tax value listed for you. The second one, they owe 2011 through 2020. The third one, they owe 2011 through, through 2020. And the fourth one, 2014 through 2020. And the fifth one, 2011 through 2020. And of course, they all, they all owe 2021. And of course, we've tried to collect these taxes, sent them numerous statements. We cannot collect the taxes.
Have you been in personal contact with these people?
Yes, what I was getting ready to say was, we, I had the appraisers to go out this week, out to the sites. And I've got pictures of these properties. I'll be glad to pass these around if you want to see them. These are current pictures.
These are the same pictures in the packet, though?
Yeah.
No.
Different one?
Oh, yeah, here in the back, yeah. And again, on each and every one of these, what's the oldest date that they have not paid their taxes?
Let's see, number two, three, and five. I don't want to really put out the names unless you want.
No, I don't want the names. I just want to know, I was just gonna make a point that there comes a time when you can't collect. Is it not after ten?
Ten, yeah, two thousand.
Year you can never collect statutory.
Actually, this year will be, come September, it'll be 2011.
My question is, is any of those about to fall into that?
This year will be 2011. I mean, this year, they owe 2011 forward right now.
All of these are, how many of these?
Three of them.
Three of these.
We're getting ready to write them off if I don't foreclose.
That's just something we write off when they were able to collect.
Right.
Yeah. And we put this off because of COVID. We kind of eased up a little bit. We got into the cycle. As much as we hate to do it, you know, it is our obligation and elected duty to collect taxes, and that's what makes the wheels go around for the county. And when we don't do that, we need to let somebody else do this job. But there comes a time when property taxes has to be paid. Most everybody pays them. And it's unfortunate when there's those that can or won't. But I agree with it, and if you're looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make the motion that we proceed with all five of these recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker to proceed with the five recommended foreclosures. Second by Commissioner Goins, is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carried. You need these back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, yes, before she, before Penny's, I've asked on a, on a personal note, Penny, to supply me with a, a few years ago, she applied me with a, like a top three hundred property owners, you know, tax. And that, and she's willing to do that. I just thought I might, some of y'all else might be interested. It's certainly interested for me to see who's, who takes care of the bigger part of the bills around here.
Send it to everyone?
Maybe all of us, I think, might would like that.
Okay. All right, I'll do it.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is Mr. Chris Knopf, County Manager. And we're staying pretty close to the agenda tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item I have is information from the county attorney related to Elkin Schools gym construction and acquisition agreement, as well as a revised resolution. Ed, you want to review that quickly?
Part of the bond financing. Elkin Gymnasium and life new middle school gymnasium will be conveyed county. After completion of the construction, we'll reconvey the facility. And in interim, we'll lease, we'll receive a deed from Elkin City Schools, we'll then execute with the school system. And the documents that are in your packet, not our resolution and construction and acquisition agreement, which the resolution accepts the property and authorizes entry into the lease and into this agreement. The purpose of the agreement is, although the county is owning drilling, the school system is agreeing and the county is requesting that the school system administer construction contract, supervise it, report back to the county on a regular basis, and also acknowledge this property transfer seat of the deed, and then the county. Elkin School, a similar resolution authorized leaving property to county and entering into construction.
I know we typically do that, and we've done it forever. Just curious, quick question, I guess you can give a quick answer. Why do we do business that way? I mean, what requires us to do that?
One aspect is that when rules are being constructed, that's true. Okay, thank you.
All right, so I guess we need to vote on that. Agreement and a resolution. All right, vote on them. All right, do I have a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the construction and acquisition agreement, as well as the lease agreement. Is that how you? Right, okay. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
I'll just mention before I move on to the next item, since this is kind of related to the debt issuance, that last Wednesday, the, the bonds were sold for the debt issuance. The, the market reaction to the, to the sale of the bonds was, I hate to use such a strong word, but it really was exceptional. The county had around forty-six million to sell. There were over a hundred and fifty-seven million in orders. About three, three-point-four times as many value of orders to what the county was selling. You know, being here as long as I have, I, I, I thought about, and when talking with our financial advisors and PNC Bank, who sold the bonds, as well as assistance from Paul Billough, who was our bond counsel, I thought about where we were ten years ago, eleven years ago, and the various members of the board who have, who have sat in these seats, the jurian, over that time period, and the financial direction they've set, and the strong position that the county finds itself in, that the market reacted that way to what basically was the county's largest ever debt issuance, and which will fund the detention center and, and, and the Elkin Gym Project. But it was far more than we expected. But it was, uh, far more than we expected, exceeded our expectations, and, um, I would say would have to make every member of this board who served in the last 11 years, pretty good about the work that they did over the last decade. I just wanted to mention that it was an impressive, uh, uh, morning, uh, to watch as they were being sold, and a lot of folks who, who, whose orders were not filled. But we'll get a full report from PNC and include that in the next packet, so you can see a good breakdown of who purchased, um, and how that last Wednesday morning went.
And the, the bond sale was how much total?
It was just over 46 million.
And there was bids for one?
157 million.
157.
3.4 request to port to one ability to get one. And, uh, I'll just say that not because of me, in spite of me perhaps, but of all the things we hear, sometimes at open forum and all the things we hear in reading the newspaper about what's not right in Suri County, I just want to say this is a phenomenal, uh, ability to have bond raters to come and look at you from top to bottom, and to look at your history, and to look where you are, and to look where you're going, and to look at your bank accounts, and to look at what you're doing right, and what you're doing wrong, what your problems are, and what they are or not. And to come up with bond ratings like 3.4 to one on the largest debt issuance we've ever issued. So I just simply want to say I'm not bragging about me, I, in spite of me perhaps, but for Suri County, I am saying that was a good, uh, checkup, a bill of health, and in a remarkable reaction to how strong they feel like Suri County is when the demand for those bond ratings was that high by independent folks who does it for a living. And I just want to give a shout out to Suri County and all the folks that's helped provide the path to wind up in the ability to be able to go to the, to the bond market, and to be rated with that kind of greeting. And I just want to say, that's a good thing, that's a good thing for Suri County.
I think all in, our rate's going to be around 1.77. So once that gets finalized, I'll pass that around. But that's much lower than what we had estimated in the, uh, model, so that will help us going forward. I think in the model, it was around three. In the DEC model, before we got.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep. All right, next item I have is a follow-up to some information I provided to board last meeting. Uh, the earthquake recovery office out of Sparta has identified some, uh, areas of county property that did receive damage based on their estimation. There's an agreement here for, um, up to $100,000 to address two of those. Jessica met with them again today related to this building. Uh, we, we do think we have some damage related to this building, which we budgeted for in the current year. Uh, we do believe that they will allocate some funds to pay for a portion of that. We just don't know what that looks like at this time. But if you want to move forward with the agreement that's in the packet, that will address the area behind the permitting center here in Dobson, as well as a couple of structures at Fisher River Park. More specifically, the fireplace shelter and the concession stand. And these are dollars that were allocated by the General Assembly to respond to damage in Suri, Allegheny, Ash, and Wilkes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept this grant agreement for the benefit of some earthquake, earthquake, uh, repairs. Granted by the, our NC Legislature, and, and I'm sure it'll be put to good use. Motion by Commissioner Johnson to accept the grant. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
And once we have more information on this facility, we'll bring back an amendment to this grant agreement. Next item is for the, is for the board to consider adopting the 2022 holiday schedule. The county mirrors the state holiday schedule. Uh, this is what has been recently adopted at the state level. There are no changes from previous years, and I would recommend the board approve it.
Do I have a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Goins to adopt the holiday schedule for 2022. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is a lease between the Northcliff Department of Public Safety and Suri County related to 3,500 square feet of office space located at 1218 State Street in Mount Erie, which is the resource center, and 800 square feet space located at 201 East Cap Street, which is the magistrate's office, um, across the road from this facility. It is time for us to consider, uh, renewing our lease with DPS. Uh, this information, um, has been reviewed by staff. It is a no-cost lease, as required by statute. We are required to provide space for those two, uh, functions of DPS.
All right, do I have a motion, gentlemen? I'll make the motion to renew the leases. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Next in your packet is an amendment, actually, it's amendment number one to the landfill gas rights agreement with Barnabas Investment Group LLC. I'll ask Ed if he wants to just kind of review this real quickly.
Question, uh, they had a caption on the first version they sent over here, and we need to make sure that we sign the proper one. Sign, uh, three month county's approval back in 2013, I think. And as they forgot about it, um, they just had. Do you have the updated? I'll send it to you. Uh, this is a request, uh, extend by five years. The gas, three months in order for the company to finance. Estimating the expenditure. It's either a mid term and a half dollars into the gas harvesting. Equipment. And other term, same, original expiration date was.
Question.
Jessica, um, just a question. You fully looked at this, um, you know why they're trying to extend it? You know what we've had, the history on it, where we're going. Does this, does this come with your full recommendation?
Yes, and they're on site, they do a great job, they work with us really well. Ed's helped me work out the details with the, all the name changes. And they have different names for the maintenance and the office. I don't, I don't know, but he's helped me with all that, and I understand that. This is for finance purposes.
They're going out to sink more whales, I guess, so to speak, going, moving across.
They have to update, um, that motor. This is the first time that they've had to, we actually have really clean gas, and they've not had to do too much to this system, but they need to update everything within. And yes, they will keep expanding as the landfill expands.
And you like it?
Yes. I mean, this is, it's not something that we're required to do. I think, um, the board was, um, very proactive years ago by putting this system in. It looks really good with the state, it helps out, you power local homes. It's only good for the environment.
What are they about, thou, a week?
About a thousand homes.
Don't you anticipate doing with the, the new coverage system, that the gas producers?
Yes, by, by not covering with the dirt and going with the tarp system that you all approved. They're so excited to see that their numbers are going to ramp up, and, and they definitely will. Because that soil will trap the methane and not allow it to get to the wells. So everything's looking up.
All right. Have, I have a motion to extend the agreement. Terms of agreement extended for a five-year period from November 11, 2031 through November 10th, 2036.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Goins. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, is there was a request during the budget process, uh, or there near the end of the budget process, at least at the July meeting, to allow the board to discuss its preference on moving forward with the enhanced litter program. Uh, there are funds budgeted within the public works, um, department for this function. There are really two different scenarios that you all discussed going back to the retreat in March. One was to engage, uh, the private sector as the state does. The other was to consider some information that Commissioner Tucker had gathered after some research of Rockingham County related to inmate collection, um, type of program. I basically, in the packet, pulled everything out that we had for discussion in March and reinserted it into your packet, uh, for your alls to discuss, for you all, excuse me, to discuss this evening.
I'm still on, uh, board with all those options. Uh, litter's still a problem, it's going to be a problem. And, uh, I'm still excited about the possibility of inmate litter collection, of an inmate litter correction program. Again, I'll just recap, and these guys know, but for the, uh, public, we've, we've had some extensive conversations with, with several counties around. There's, there's about 14 that participate in these kind of programs. One of our closest neighbors that do and do it successfully is Rockingham County. We were right on the cusp of, uh, looking at, uh, whether we could do this and how we could implement it. We talked to the Sheriff's Department, we have not got any, no, we don't like it. Uh, can we do it? Probably we can do it. But then, you know, COVID, once again, COVID came along, and with COVID, then the rules, it was, uh, the close contact and getting that, getting them in, getting them out, and how you pick up garbage with a mask, and you, you all know the story, but. But now we're trying to move on, and, uh, these funds that you've appropriated, I'm, I'm still in favor of, um, and as a member of the litter committee, uh, I'm still in favor of this, and I would like to expedite discussions. Maybe through, if I could ask the chairman that's, uh, holding the gavel now to be in touch with the Sheriff's Department and see if we can set up some, some more negotiations. Uh, and I would like to recommend that we go back and pursue that interest of inmate litter collect, uh, an inmate litter, uh, collection program. And, uh, I, I like the idea still, that's just a comment.
Chairman, I, and I guess this is a question to be, to, uh, wrote down as I, as I reviewed this. Rockingham cost them $115,000. Right, $100,000 a year.
Yes.
And for 500 miles, it'd be 52,000. Do we, do we know how many, how many miles that Rockingham County except for $115,000? That might be.
I do not know that, but I have, uh, all the contact numbers for the, uh, people that run the program and Sheriff's Department, we can, we can certainly find out.
I'm giving it away, but I.
Understand, I, you know, even if we didn't make any profit at it as opposed to another private entrepreneur, I still feel like we'd be, we'd be doing some people in the jail a favor. I think it sends a good message to people that, you know, we are able to reward folks that are willing to bring themselves up from one level to another. I think inmate litter, inmate litter, uh, collection is, uh, even if we couldn't do it quite as cheap, if we could do it close to as cheap, I think it's something we still ought to pursue. It's not just about litter, it's about what we're doing in Suri County, and what we're doing with our inmates, and what we're, how we're partnering with our Sheriff's Department, and the image that we see when people go down the road and feel good about it. And you know, if I was sitting over there, and I've said this before, and I'll say it again, and I had an option of sitting in, in confinement all day versus the opportunity to get out and pick up a little garbage a few days, I'd take it every time. And I know some of them would as well, so. But I, you know, we can certainly find out to answer your question.
I'd be happy to, uh, talk with the sheriff on it, and if you could get those contact numbers.
They ha- they have them all. Uh, we've conversed, uh, with, uh, that if they needed a reminder, I would, I have them as well, and, uh.
Haven't we already had the conversation with the sheriff?
We did.
And?
Prior to COVID.
Mr. Chairman, what did we put in the budget this year for, um, the litter program?
You recall, it's in excess of, of the 115.
It's 115. In excess, okay. And part of that's being funded by the increase in the, uh, landfill fees with, that will.
The outsold availability fee.
Okay, for the enterprise fund, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what I'm doing, and I want to say that's the enterprise fund. That's exactly the model they use in Rockingham County by Sheriff Sam Page. I've talked to him extensively about this. This doesn't involve a lot of prisoners. This might involve eight or 12 that meet the eligibility with two or three or four doing it at one time. But it works for him, and he tells me it's not a money loser, that it's, um, it's maybe not cheaper than he can get it done with a contracting agency, but it's not much difference. And, uh, but it makes people in Rockingham County feel good about the program, and I think it would here too, in Suri.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes.
The, uh, Suri County in, uh, the last, uh, 10 years have been very aggressive in, in litter, and it is a topic that comes up often. And it is a topic that, uh, a lot of our citizens are cer- concerned about, and it reflects poorly on us as a county. But every, every county has this problem, we're not, uh, unique in that respect. There's 115,000 here estimated budget for the, uh, inmate collection, 52,000 for third-party collections on, uh, secondary roads that aren't covered by the state's program. And then 7,500 for a sweet weeks, which would be twice a year. Uh, 10,000 for enforcement of the, uh, franchise collectors. And, um, if you'll remember, we did, uh, start a franchise program for the commercial haulers in Suri County, um, to make them accountable when they get garbage in Suri County, that it doesn't blow out of their trucks. So that looks like a good, uh, move there. And, uh, 15 for the litter committee programs that we've always done, which is signs and, um, all the things, uh, the school programs. Uh, part of that has always been education, um, prevention and enforcement. Um, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this thing, but I don't think there's a bad one in the bunch. And I'm, I think the monies are there to, um, to, to, exactly, Commissioner Johnson. And, uh, I, I think we, uh, we don't need to wait any longer. And a lot of folks have accused me in this county of dragging my feet once in a while on some issues, but this is one I think we need to go ahead and do right now. And, uh, so I think, um, uh, I think we just need to drop the hammer on this tonight.
I'll make a motion, we drop the hammer and proceed full speed ahead with the allocations as presented with County Manager on litter and mitigation of litter.
Like, Mr. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir.
Does that mean inmate collection, third-party collection, sweet weeks? The enforcement of these franchise collectors?
I think at a later date, we could modify them just a little as.
I mean, the, I mean, the whole shebang. You're going to try to choose between third-party and inmate, inmate. I, I, I would, my personal view, I'd like to, for this first year, have a little bit of all of it and see what works best.
Yeah.
I, I agree with Commissioner Johnson, uh, and I think on the secondary, uh, third-party collection part of it, um, you know, obviously, we'll have to bid that out, I'm assuming, won't we, Jessica?
I think.
And, um, and then therein lies the question of what, which secondary roads are we going to choose? So I think between the commissioners and, um, Ms. Montgomery, I think we can probably come up with, uh, the secondary road schedule that, uh, you know, obviously, we need to tackle the worst, the worst of the worst. So, uh, I think that's something we can all work out amicably among ourselves, yeah.
All right. I'll second that. Motion been made and seconded, is there any more discussion? Proceed, proceed full speed with all. All areas.
Mr. County Manager has laid out his recommendation here.
Yes. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried.
Next item I have is actually two requests, the first one is from the Health Director, Samantha Aines, related to a reappointment of a Board of Health member, Dr. Michael Gentry serves as the physician member, and his first term will expire in September, he is willing and eligible to serve a second term, and she recommends, she and Eddie Jordan, the chairman of the Board of Health, recommend his reappointment.
Have a motion, gentlemen.
I'll make that motion, he's a good committee member.
Good board member. Commissioner Johnson to reappoint Michael Gentry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goins, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried.
Related to the Recreation Advisory Committee, Daniel White is recommending if the board is willing to appoint Linda Davis to serve, she currently lives on the edge of three districts, she lives on that part of two sixty-eight where the central, the east, and the south district come together, as you can see, he has a couple of vacancies, plus his, as you know, Eddie Wilmouth, the chairperson, recently passed away, so he is in dire need of goodwilling volunteers who want to serve, Linda has served before and has always been a good member. In addition to that recommendation, he asked that Jay Yopsey, Jay Works, is from Pilot Mountain, has worked at the Armfield Civic Center, add him as an ex officio member instead of a voting member.
All right, I spoke with Daniel on this topic, and Eddie was from my district, and a great loss to Surrey County. But Linda, Linda, she's a fine lady, and she's worked really hard on Recreation Committee before, and I told him I was more than willing to nominate Linda to represent on the Recreation Advisory Committee. Let me just go ahead and let her come from the central district. And I guess we can lump it all in together.
Make one motion, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Linda Davis to the Recreation Committee. And. What was the second part?
Jay Yop.
Jay Yop as ex officio.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, if we have any discussion?
What's the difference between an ex officio, I mean, in this capacity?
They serve, but they do not vote.
Serve but not vote? I understand, so how many ex officio positions do we have in that particular committee? Just one or two? I mean, does that take care of our vacancies by doing it that way, Daniel?
Not all of them.
I didn't think so.
We still have a couple more.
Okay.
Still got three.
That's what I was reasoning, is that the ex officio, I don't know, we're going to have to come up with some more. Got a motion?
Got a motion?
He looks like a recreation lady.
Yes. All right, got a motion and second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And tell her about the application process.
If you have an interest in serving, at the break, you can see Nathan here, and he can get an application for you. Also, there's an informational item here about a resignation from the Nursing Home Committee, Wanda Akers, her schedule would not allow her to serve, so this is just an informational item for you, and Nathan will add that to the list of vacancies for the board to consider. That's everything that I had in my regular items, we do have a request for closed session after General County Business for County Commissioners, one for Economic Development, and a legal update from Ed.
All right.
And personnel.
Now, General County Business, Commissioner's Business, anyone have anything they want to comment on tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to report on some of the things that we've approved, the natural gas line for Altec coming from the city of Manory down to, that is going great, it started at Altec, and it just about made it, if anybody familiar towards Reece Mill and Reece Road, it's already made it to Glass Road, and I'm very pleased with that, of course, I think once it get on Westfield Road and ever had spoke to track. Did you say it's at Manory Middle School, is that where they're going to take it to, Ed? The natural gas line, is it at Manory Middle School? Okay, well, anyway, I'm real pleased with that, and also, the water line going to Manory, to Pilot Mountains, begun just a little bit, they've maybe done a half a mile, starting Holly Springs exit down Old Fifty-two, but I was told that it'd be August for a whole lot of the pipe to come in, so they've just been piddling a little bit. Okay. Well, they made just a little dent so far.
Most of it's decent. But there's no dedicated.
Right. Well, and the last thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to echo Mr. Henson's concerns about the ordinance that we've been talking about for a good while, I would like, I know our last conversation, as best I can remember, was during our retreat in April, no, in February, I think, and I know we was pretty close, I think a few of us said if there's a paragraph or two, maybe removed, it all sounded good, but anyway, I just want to let you know, I just want to remind, I would like to see that in our next meeting or two, maybe we could go ahead and address that again, and maybe take some action. That was the reason I called you today.
Okay.
I continue to get called, man, I've gotten several calls.
Call this.
Not just about one, but about several.
Okay, well.
I'll just simply say, I haven't seen any version of it, and where we kind of got last stuck, as I remember was, I wasn't in favor, you know, some of us, and I was one of them, was not in favor of a general painting with one broad brush county-wide ordinance that I felt like needed some refining before I could support it, so if you want to bring it up to the next meeting, that's fine, but I would like to have ample opportunity to read the versions that's been presented, the latest versions, and hear some discussion about it, that's a big step forward, and when you start bringing in ordinance regulations that fit the whole county countryside, there's a lot of difference between the edge of a municipality and the edge of the Yadkin River, where I live, and the Yadkin County right across the stream, so, you know, I still need, I would need a little more review and time and reservation on that, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I'm just like for the chairman, at his timeframe to escape that in the near future.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Ed, does that ordinance change, it'll require a public hearing, wouldn't it? Okay, yeah, you know, I don't know how we get the message out, I mean, I've been to, you know, public hearings here many years ago, that, you know, this room was full of people, but, you know, the Mount Airy News simply doesn't report on anything anymore, and.
Hearing tonight was published.
Well, I understand it was published in the Mount Airy News, but, you know, it typically comes, unless it's an article, nobody, I mean, nobody's going to pay much attention to that, I mean, it's just a fact of life, but I'm like Commissioner Tucker, I, one person's trash is another person's treasure, I think, you know, I'm certainly going to look at whatever we got there, and I don't remember the exact way the conversation went, or the language or whatever, but I'll take a fresh, clean look at it, and be glad to keep an open mind about it, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, this past weekend, the ambassador to the United States from Thailand was in Mount Airy, and all his delegation, I believe there was like eighteen of them, they came in for the Ying and Chang bunker reunion, they presented the city and the county with the plaque, this came from Surrey Arts Council, which was sent there, and celebrating the one hundred and eighty-eighth anniversary of the relations between Kingdom of Thailand and the United States of America, and the thirty-first annual reunion of the descendants of the original Siamese twins, Ying and Chang Bucker. They're probably going to hang this up, give this to the Museum of Historical Significance, and that's, if that's okay with the other commissioner, but I had a great time, the ambassador was a very personable guy, and world traveler, he was a former ambassador to Poland, Belgium, and all over the world, but we had a great time, and it was a good event, and bunker reunion went well, so having a great summer, and hope everyone else is, and maybe we can get back to near normal here before long. Anyone else? Have a motion for close. Motion to close, is there a second? My Commissioner Harris, is any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
It's not muted, is she good?
Yeah, I did.
I'll call the meeting back to order.
Make a motion that we surplus, just call it by the name, Graham Field in Mount Airy, the Jones Resource Center in Mount Airy, and the old Westfield School in...
Motion by Commissioner Goins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, any other business, gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Goins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting closed. Thank you, gentlemen. And ladies...
All right, see you. You too.